Great, so we ready? We're ready. Okay, Chris.
Uh, motion to recess executive session and reconvene in open session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to seal the executive session minutes pursuant to section forty-two dash forty-six dash seven R I G L.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, welcome. Um, you guys need to open your meeting first.
I will now call to order the Middletown School Committee at six ten P M on Monday twenty-seven January twenty twenty-five. I will entertain a motion to convene the Middletown School Committee meeting.
I make a motion that we uh convene the Middletown School Committee meeting?
Motion was made to convene the Middletown School Committee and has been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Will the clerk please conduct roll call and report on the quorum status?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greg Hewitt. Wendy Heaney.
Present.
Jamie Holden. Teresa Silveira.
Tangler, here.
I'm sorry. Jesus, Teresa, I apologize. It's always gonna be Silveira to me. I apologize.
Me too.
There'll always be Lady Maysa.
William Nash, present. We have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Would you like me to read the motions that I need to now or wait?
I gotta read this in first, yeah. Okay. So, six P M school committee pre-budget consultation, number two. Pursuant to section sixteen dash two dash twenty-one, pre-budget consultation. Annual reports, appropriation requests, budgets. A, at least sixty days but not more than ninety days prior to the formal submission of the school budget to the appropriate city or town officials by the school committee. There shall be a joint pre-budget meeting, which is tonight, between the school committee and the city or town councils, added before this meeting. Number one, the highest elected official of the city or town shall submit to the school committee an estimate prepared in a manner approved by the Department Administration of projected revenues for the next fiscal year. In the case of the property tax, the projections shall include only changes in the property tax base, not property tax rates. Number two, the school committee shall submit to the town, city or town council a statement for the next ensuing fiscal year of anticipated total expenditures, projected enrollments with resultant staff and facility requirements, and any necessary or mandated changes in school programs or operations.
Motion to begin the pre-budget consultation pursuant to section sixteen dash two dash twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Guys, I think what we'll do is, we'll just read all of them in, and then, one by one, and then we'll do the presentation, and at the end of number seven, um, you know, you can adjourn. Okay, once, once we're done, okay? Instead of reading it, because the conversation's gonna include all these things anyway, so they just have to be listed separately, so we'll just read them in, we'll have the discussion, when we finish, you close out, all right? So, number three, communication of myself, a town council president in reference to information in accordance with Rhode Island General Law sixteen dash two dash twenty-one.
Motion to receive said communication.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number four, receipt of revenue manual.
Motion to receive said revenue manual.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Number five, um, presentation, pre-budget consultation for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six, town slash school revenue conference.
Motion to begin said presentation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now Greg, if you wanna read yours on your agenda?
I will entertain a motion to receive the said memorandum, memorandum of Greg Hewitt, school committee chair regarding pre-budget consultation fiscal year twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-six.
Make a motion to receive said memorandum?
Second.
Motion has been made to receive said memorandum. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. I will entertain a motion to begin the presentation, Middletown's Public Schools Revenue Conference.
I make a motion to begin the presentation, Middletown Revenue Conference.
Second.
Motion has been made to begin the presentation, Middletown Public Schools Revenue Conference, and it has been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, number six, memorandum of Greg Hewitt, school committee chair in reference to pre-budget consultation fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Motion to receive said memorandum.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And number seven, presentation, Middletown Public Schools Revenue Conference.
Motion to begin said presentation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Woo.
Okay. Do you wanna start?
I'm gonna let Mark start with the presentation.
Who's that fine finance director here? Here we go.
And I believe Patrick's gonna weigh in when it comes to uh what the highlight of decrease in state aid. Governor's.
Okay.
Doing a lot of work.
Yep.
Kind of work that actually happened.
Yeah, I would just ask that. I know there's one mic for each table, so if you're gonna speak, make sure you grab the mic so people at home can hear what's going on, okay? Thank you. Uh, Mr. Tangway?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council, school committee. I, we do have the revenue conference presentation for you, if you could go to the next slide. Which, uh, you actually have read this in already. It was item two, items one and two of item two. So I'm not gonna repeat it. It does reference to state law as to why we're having this meeting tonight. Next slide, please. Well, we'll start with the anticipated revenues. And I'd like to state that these revenues do include the governor's proposed budget uh that just came out recently on the sixteenth. So if you go, if you have your revenue manual, these figures will be a little different because the revenue manual was prepared prior to the budget's uh recommended budget. So the anticipated revenues for the general fund, which also includes the school, is estimated to be eighty-eight million, three hundred sixty-four thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars, which is a five hundred and nineteen thousand or point five eight percent decrease over the prior year, which is this current year. Increases in municipal revenues of four million, seven hundred ninety thousand, and a decrease in the school revenue of five million, three hundred nine thousand will be identified in the following slides. So on the bottom, we have a little his history from fiscal year twenty-one to twenty-four. Those are the actual rev- actual revenues. And then we have the twenty-five budget, and then the estimated revenues for fiscal year twenty-six. As you can see, they've increased. Except this last year, it's a projection to decrease. So now we get into the nitty-gritty, which a lot of these, these figures are identified in the revenue manual from pages fifteen to eighteen. And the revenue manual is already online in the finance office. First line is restricted grant in aid for federal sources will decrease estimated five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is mostly due to the H V A C grant that we received for the police department. Funds transferred in, decrease of two hundred and forty-two thousand. Majority of that is related to the American Rescue Plan Act in the sc- and part of the uh school reduction plan of two hundred thousand dollars. We have some minor changes, but use of fund balance of ten thousand. Other revenues from local sources reduced by fifteen thousand. Penalties, which is interest for taxes, is reducing by ten thousand. Licenses has a small increase of a thousand. Fines and other fees decreased twenty-five thousand. Investment income will in- increase of a hundred and twenty thousand. Revenues from other sources decreased twenty thousand. Permits will increase eighty-three thousand, five hundred. Restricted grant in aid from state sources decrease a thousand. Use and other program fees increase eighteen thousand, five hundred. Intragovernmental support, this is the governor's budget, increase for the town of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven-ten. But I'd like to footnote that this is mostly from hotel and meals taxes, which is a really a projection of what the activity will be in the, of fiscal year twenty-six. And finally, the taxes levied by municipality, increase of million eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars, which is an increase of three point three percent, which, when we get to slide eight, I will identify the majority of that. The next slide goes over the school anticipated changes in revenues, and these, the breakdown of this can be found in the revenue manual from pages one sixty-five to one sixty-seven. And I'm gonna have Patrick who over this slide.
So at this point in time, the school department has budgeted revenues that are consistent with the F Y twenty-five budget. However, from receiving the governor's recommended budget about two weeks ago, uh, we became aware that the school department is currently projected to receive a decrease of five hundred and fifty-six thousand.
Patrick, can I ask you to speak up a little?
Sure, yep.
Thank you.
Uh, they're projected to de- receive a decrease in five hundred and fifty-six thousand of education aid uh when compared to the adopted budget for this fiscal year. Uh, from reviewing the information that's been published over the last two weeks, the main reason from this decrease is a decrease in enrollment when comparing to the prior year and the state share ratio that's included in the funding formula. Ride continues to revise the state education aid and is very likely that the proposed uh education aid will actually be a decrease. Uh, other items to note on this slide are uh a decrease of federal grants of a hundred fifty thousand due to the federal S R funds sunsetting. Uh, the enterprise funds are showing a decrease of seventy-six thousand due to uh continuing cell tower negotiations that are gonna be happening uh due to the construction of the new middle high school. And lastly, there's a projected decrease in restricted grants and aid um that are for C T E categorical funds that the school department is currently budgeted for that they hadn't spent in prior years.
The next slide is identifying the anticipated changes in the property tax base, which is also requirement of the, of the general law. This is pro- information provided by a tax assessor. The preliminary net tax base is estimated to be tot- uh total of five billion, three hundred forty-nine thousand, uh, three hundred thousand, three hundred forty-nine million, three hundred thousand, which is a thirty-four million, five hundred thousand increase or point sixty-five percent. Sounds like a lot, but it's a small percentage of the total base, point sixty-five percent, and that's over the current fiscal year. Fiscal year twenty-six will be the s- second year since the revow, statistical revow took place. Real property values increase naturally based on renovations, additions, and new developments. As for the motor vehicle tax, that was eliminated in fiscal year twenty-four. Who, that has no impact on the revenues here. But we will get the same motor vehicle tax based on the governor's budget. The tangible tax exemptions uh in- increase from what the town had at fifteen thousand to the state imposed a fifty thousand exemption, and that was in effect in fiscal year twenty-five, current year. And lastly, uh, the town council is considering exploring legislation to classify property owners who rent their property long-term as eligible to receive the residential resident real property tax rates, which we split in the last couple of year budgets. Nothing has been determined, but you're investigating.
Yeah, that went up to the state. Legislation.
Yeah. That's what, what are you trying to anticipate here?
These right here is just a tax base.
Right.
That's what this is about.
If that does pass, we'll be getting that, we'll get the same amount of revenue, but we'll be generating less revenue from those properties, correct?
They, they would have, they would qualify for the lower.
Yeah, thirty percent less, well, yeah.
Yep. Right.
Yeah.
And that'll get spread back out for the, the whole tax base then.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. The next slide is another statutory inclusion in this meeting, which identifies what a hundred and four percent or the maximum of the current appropriation for taxes is. So I'll read in the law, Rhode Island General Law sixteen dash two dash twenty-one D six. The budget adopted and presented by any school committee for the fiscal year thirteen and for each fiscal year thereafter should not propose the appropriation of municipal funds in excess of one hundred and four percent of the total of municipal funds appropriated by the town council for any school purposes for a previous fiscal year. So I'll identify what that hundred and four percent is. The top portion is for the school, fiscal year twenty-five, the appropriation is thirty-one million, six hundred thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred thirty-seven dollars. Hundred and four percent will bring that to thirty-two million, nine hundred four thousand, four hundred ninety-four dollars or one million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred fifty-seven dollar increase. For the town, they receive an appropriation of twenty-four million, five hundred sixteen thousand, one hundred forty dollars. Hundred and four percent increase would bring that to twenty-five million, four hundred ninety-six thousand, seven hundred eighty-six dollars for a total increase of nine hundred eighty thousand, six forty, six hundred and forty-six dollars. Just, this is just what I'm identifying is the maximum that could be raised, a hundred and four percent.
By state law.
Alright. Now I said I would re- I would identify the changes for that um municipal levy, the tax levy proposed, or I mean, for forecasted, not proposed, which starts out at fiscal year twenty-five, that the budgeted tax levy is fifty-six million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, seventy-seven dollars. The, the revenues include the school appropriation increase of four percent of that one million, two hundred sixty-five thousand. The school deficit reduction plan, which is in, which includes a two hundred thousand tax appropriation, removing, reducing the American Rescue Plan Act appropriation for the deficit reduction plan.
And that's the final year.
This is the final year that they have an American Rescue Plan appropriation.
Right.
Defi- uh debt service obligations will increase three hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and twelve. And we do have a few unions that are in negotiations, so we built in a contingency of a hundred and four thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars. And those uh unions will be identified later on in the presentation. So overall, it's a three point three percent increase.
So, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So, initially, when the, when the governor's budget came out, some of those calculations weren't accurate. Is that, is that correct?
Um, the proposed governor's budget, correct, compared to you mentioning ride for the school, is that?
Yeah, there was something that wasn't.
Yep.
It was, are these, do these numbers reflect that, or is that a, that a bit, that?
These numbers reflect the ride numbers.
They do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which we were told were the more accurate numbers.
Right.
Which they're still reviewing. They're not final.
Well, there's gonna be another revision.
Yep.
Um, which will be more unfavorable for decrease. Um, they had counted kindergarten students. Okay. You wanna do this one, Sean? Yeah, just quickly, um, you know, the challenge coming up with this upcoming budget cycle is to create a balanced operating budget. Um, however, yeah, the revenues overall of um, that will create a, a challenging problem. Not only the balance. Uh, the economy is certainly a challenge and a risk. Make sure that the local economy is stressed, uh, so the decisions we make, make sure that don't undermine the success we have in Middletown. Create here, uh, so that there's a balance. That's also connected to what's happening nationally. There's, there's a lot of politics going on. Article about tariffs with Canada. Uh, so all of these things that are happening are gonna have an impact. Uh, so you are uh employee recruitment and retention, uh, can you challenge for us? The challenges being qualified. Have, um, our best to try to sell the, your, uh, however. Uh, housing, which is a priority of the town council. We are challenged not only because uh Noah moving here, as well as discard uh, we do have a, a housing, bigger housing challenge. That's something that priority distribution and is a, a challenge as we put this. Uh, infrastructure funding is
Can you pull that a little closer, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, infrastructure funding is an issue. Uh, we continue to identify stormwater, sewer. Structure that to us. There is a limit to the amount of that by projects. Creative, better with our grant writing. Other ships. Problem, challenges within the community. Um, I already touched upon naval station. Negative. Really, when you are pulling elsewhere in the state, there's a challenge of people. Uh, with the opportunity becomes possible. These transitions. New uh residents. Successful. We have a lot of work. Uh, we do have the school and library building programs. Many ways, uh, these are, we are proactive. Speedy funnel. Solidity, price scale. I'm trying to be more efficient. There. More efficient. Effective. Um, library, uh, same thing, using housing. Well, it generates tax revenue. Funding to property. Also, when this gets back for expansion. Um, there is a great concern at the state level. Um, to Rhode Island, um, and we have schools. Program. So that I don't have a problem staying. Do a great job to have a community because these are people that are uh funding for those jobs on so outside of Middletown. Uh, so that means the community itself from, from the employee. And finally, something that we're talking more and more about is beach condition is working with our consultant. How, how second beach is impacted by change. Discussion about beaches provide for the activity. That will continue to be an issue. Uh, also yet infrastructure. Look at where, where we make improvements in the system to not only improve them slanting to changes. The energy from storms that come here. Water table. We do have a number of challenges in our staff and a lot of juniors. Play with the town. We do have to probably balance the budget, try to different, different facets into our law. I will say just self. The changes in Washington, certainly concerning a couple of weeks ago. Operates sure that there's reimbursement requests going in a very timely manner. Sure. Some things to say down in Washington, but have been some events that would normally see those applications. Here. Where President Trump asked applications that process. So we, we are seeing other funding. We have to, we have to plan around that. We have to plan around the potential changes be implemented over the Thank you.
So, as I believe March comes around, we'll have more um secure numbers?
They'll be better, yes.
Yes.
Yep. Um, I, I don't think the state has been shy about saying they don't have a different company. You know, the state has a deficit.
Yep.
Um, from the media releases and interviews given by Joe Shikarchi. Said it. They cautioned everyone programs. Governor's office. Sort of parse through those uh statements. Try to really read what Yeah, this isn't a year where government is getting bigger. It's a year where governments have smaller.
Does any councils have any questions? Comments? Turns. One of the things I I talked to Sean today about was, we've been talking right along about this. You know, when you start hearing that the state has a deficit, you know that, you know. That runs downhill, right? So. You look back at and you try and learn from your from your from your previous decisions. Where you don't want to end up where we were end up before, right? In a deficit. You look all around and look at school committees throughout this, throughout the state now, there's more and more school committees with. Or schools, I should say, with a deficit. And some of that, maybe they're issue and some of it may not, based on the funding levels. Now, we're facing that. I'm not saying we're facing a deficit. I'm saying we're facing funding issues like these other school departments and school committees are. So we have to, we can't allow that to happen. We have to be pretty sharp and at the same time, create that balance of affordability for our taxpayers as well. So. You know, I've read through what your ask is. I've read through what your plan is. So, you know, we're going to need to discuss that. And I think with all the heads together at this table, we can certainly figure it out. No doubt, so.
I think the superintendent has some a presentation or comments prepared.
Yep.
Mr. Council President, may I say a couple things?
Yes, sir.
The superintendent comes up. First, I'd like to thank the council, the town administrator, and the many town staff members for their outstanding support and assistance to the school committee. Our superintendent and our school district staff members for helping us preparing for this important presentation. Before I introduce our superintendent, I would like to note that our school committee has made significant strides in providing greater transparency into the business of the school district. Every agenda item with corresponding documents, the same documents minus any protected information that each school committee member utilizes. Were made available online prior to our most recent school committee meeting. That practice will continue. I bring this to the council's attention because transparency, especially during discussions of fiscal matters, is a critical component to establishing trust. And a spirit of teamwork between the school district and the town. The school committee and the superintendent will continue to explore every avenue to improve transparency and a spirit of teamwork moving forward. I will now turn over the presentation portion to our superintendent, Mr. Billy Niemeyer, and I stand by for any questions the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hewitt. Good evening, Council President and council members and residents of Middle Town that are watching online. I thank you for your time this evening. I intend on being brief, but thorough and explaining the financial climate that we're predicted to encounter next year. We've heard a little bit about it tonight. As you know, we're predicted to have a lean year. It's my intention to remain focused on student success. But recognize there are a number of factors that are unavoidable and that will be potential financial barriers to us as a school district. Do you have my slide deck?
We do.
Grace, will you move forward? Sorry, I jumped the gun. I'll keep going. It'll catch up. I don't have many slides. So as you may know, the school department has undergone significant changes since the last budget meeting held during the spring of last year, and we met to discuss the budget. I remember distinctly Councilman Logan telling me that this year I could not a hundred percent count on a four percent increase in support from the town. I remember that well. Those words have stuck with me since taking the helm in Middle Town in July. And as a taxpayer in a different town that does not share the same respect for the taxpayer like Middle Town does, I appreciate my responsibility to run an efficient and effective school department that has positive outcomes for students. I understand that. As a team, we've made a concerted effort to work towards a more efficient, more effective school district. And we're making strides in this direction. We've proven to be adaptable with our special education programming. And better to better suit the needs of our students. We've created programming that generates income and serves our students as well as the students from other communities. We've also created programming that brings students back to our own schools. The Transition Academy, housed at the YMCA, is a great example of this. We've rebuilt partnerships with Bradley Hospital, housing a new program at Goday at the middle school. That creates a much needed that creates much needed seats and behavioral behavioral supports for Middle Town students and students from other districts as well. We've worked with the town and the town administrator to continue to build the shared services model for the business office. This has been a big win for us. Lots of progress has been made. We've even extended that model, working with the town to create a shared facilities director, bringing in a candidate that's revered as an expert expert in building new facilities. And has a proven track record as a facilities director. We're excited for the efficiencies that this will create for us, and we've already seen the benefits. Snows are are one little snowstorm was a great example of that, you know, having the town and the school department working together. To get things done. It was great, and I think it was great for everybody. I anticipate that the continued collaboration is going to be successful, both in the business office and with facilities, saving the town and the school's money. We're currently creative. We're working creatively with Ride and outside partners to help fund Ride required curriculum and build capacity within our teaching ranks. We've shifted models and intend to continue supporting instruction in the classroom with coaching and instructional support. We are also taking a close look at our staffing. We're looking to redefine roles. Better use positions that already exist and build systems that help us run more efficiently. Our MTSS committee is a great example of building capacity in our buildings with no additional staff. We're really refining that process of supporting students and getting what they need. We're doing all of this, knowing that we will likely have to operate with less and knowing we must continue to improve safety, well-being, and learning in our schools. That being said, I think any teacher will, any teacher you ask will tell you that the students coming into their classrooms nowadays have more need than ever. We see challenges in every school every day, and we're struggling to provide an appropriate level of support to our students. And we that's we're exactly what we're tasked with, right? Supporting our students and getting them what they need every day. There's no slides. I'm just going to keep going. Initially, the state provided us with a total dollar amount that we could expect as a decrease in funding. It was approximately four hundred and sixty thousand dollars at the time. That was a shock. A few days later, that number rose to almost six hundred and sixty thousand dollars just last week, as Mr. Brown mentioned. It was actually our pre-K numbers they were looking at, our pre-K. Our half days. They counted students as full day students. So there there is going to be another adjustment. Let's see. So we need to be prepared for that. This is all tied to our enrollment numbers, as you know. Enrollment across the region is generally down. We are looking forward to having Noah in the Coast Guard ships arrive in Middle Town. That will be a boost for us. But unfortunately, we can't count on that right now. We can't preemptively count on that. So our federal impact aid, which comes to us, you know, through our military community, is also tied to that number, but we don't. We're submitting on Friday, so I'll have a more concrete number for you then. But we anticipate a decrease in that as well. So we have many factors that are working against us. As you can see, well, in the slide that doesn't exist right now. There are a number of anticipation anticipated increases in spending. The slide also would indicate that we're negotiating two contracts. For the record, that number's three. So we're negotiating with teachers, teacher assistants, and custodians at the same time. So I apologize for the error in the slide that doesn't exist. Special education out of distant place, out of district placements continue to be an incredible expense. Special education transportation alone rose one hundred and sixty-one percent this year. Homeless transportation increased seventy-four percent this year. We're obligated to provide students what they need, no matter what the expense. Statewide transportation has also proven to be a wild card for us. We simply cannot predict what's going to happen with that. It's all based on student situations. Our out of district placements were budgeted at two point seven million dollars, and that cost has already gone up significantly. Our our transportation, just regular buses. Our contract has come up. It's going out to bid this week. And we're headed out to bid, looking for the best deal we can possibly bet yet. But naturally, we're expecting an increase in cost of that service. We've we've looked to reduce bus size. We just didn't have any luck with that this year. We just couldn't. We couldn't do it. But we're looking and we're continuously trying. Health, health and dental benefits are expected to rise, as you would guess. And while we spent over a million dollars in out of district tuition, we continue to develop our programming to attract students for our CTE in our district. We're exploring options for developing comprehensive and common sense programming to bring kids to our district. I continue to look forward to our new middle high school and a robust menu of CTE options as a way to bring kids back to Middle Town and attract others from other districts to join us. While we know that we need every employee that we currently have and would benefit from more support in our ranks. Our administration team has been working to prioritize the most essential requests during this year's budget process. We continue to work with administrators to prioritize requests that you may see in our budget presentations this spring. Right now, it's just too early to tell you. I mean, I have a list in my head of, I know what we need. I know I've talked with the administrators, but. We have we have so many wild cards here with contracts and stuff like that, that it's it's hard for me to give you an exact number right now. We're weighing every decision with a lens of safety, well-being, and learning. While our population is decreasing, we know that the needs of the students in front of us are increasing. It's just a fact. It's a changing world that we're living in. As your superintendent, I have to ask for four percent increase to support the maintenance and development of our school district. As the budget process rolls on, I'll be sharing specifics of what we need and the rationale for these decisions. But for the sake of this presentation, we are requesting a four percent increase in support from the council and the taxpayers of Middle Town. With the four major contracts up for negotiation, all with likely increases, we have a few large variables in our equation still, like I mentioned. We're confident that the school district is moving in the right direction, that you'll continue to see fiscally responsible and impactful decisions being made for our schools. Can I answer any questions for you?
I have a question. So maybe not just for you, Billy, just more of a statement for everybody in the room that 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 we need to figure this out, obviously, but, you know, we're looking at. You know, less funding, increased costs in transportation. And a. Decrease in. By about ninety-eight students is what I read. All at a hundred, right? So. That's why why that's why there's a decrease in in funding, I'm sure, part of it anyway. The multi-language learner population, I read that continuing to grow. It's up around two hundred now.
Yep.
And I anticipate that to continue to grow over time. So. One of the things that you stated that. In the in the in the in the notes that were given. That, you know, we continue to look aggressively within the district to repurpose positions, create efficiencies, and improve outcomes with smarter utilization of staff and processes. So. I know in the past, when we've talked about budgets and we would say, hey, you know, you're down fifty students. Doesn't that equal one teacher going away? And it'd be no, because it's spread across so many grades. My concern is that, or my question is that, so if we're projected down a hundred. I think we need to be cautious there because that numbers could rise significantly. Sean, when is Noah and the other groups expected to be here? I mean, do we have any projections on enrollment with 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 those folks?
We do. Noah will be here. They've started to arrive, but they'll they'll continue to arrive over the next two years. And then. We'll get more information.
But do we have a projected number of increase in students? Does anybody have that number or?
We do.
We do.
We do. It would need to be adjusted up for the two additions ships.
So is it is it an additional hundred kids? Is it additional?
I don't have it with me right now.
Could we just figure on being flat to last year at this point?
Sorry, say that again.
Should we continue? Should we figure on being flat as far as enrollment goes? You know, we're projected to be down a hundred kids, right? Ninety-eight kids. Should we just plan for being flat at this point with stay with that number? Or is that a safe number? Because I think we have to plan for that.
So I think the superintendent would answer.
I was gonna say, if I may, when we started the the building, you know, when we were starting in the building process for the new middle high school, we conducted a. What you'd call it, a survey, or they made their predictions. Usually, we use NASDAQ. Middle Town does her own, which has a.
Their kids to to private schools anymore, or they may see Middle Town's education improving. And they may say, hey, between those two factors. So that's stuff we really need to look. And I'm very cautious about making cuts because. And staff because.
Those employees, those military people have to live within thirty minutes of their ships. So what that means is they're going to be looking very seriously in at Middle Town. One of the things that happens with that is that the enrollment increases, that people people need the housing to 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 keep them here. We need to, we need to have the housing to keep them here. So there's that issue. But then you have the issue of of the kids going to the school. It's going to increase the enrollment. But the 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 ramifications of that have to do with the fact that it needs more money coming in too. Because those of you who remember years ago, when when the reimbursement from the federal government was much higher, okay, it was because of enrollment. I I like I like to say that when I retired from the Middle Town school system, there were twelve hundred and fifty kids at the high school. Now there are roughly twelve hundred and fifty kids at both high schools. But but the point was that at that point, the federal government was providing a substantial amount of money of reimbursement. Because those kids were in the schools. And as a result of that, the programs were much better as well, much broader, much larger, much more, much better for the kids. So quite frankly, I'm looking forward to what's coming. Yes, this year and maybe even next year are going to be a little tough, but we're going on the upswing and we need to realize that.
I think the other the other key here is I as I look at some of the information that was provided for special education. That's really a wild card in a sense of. You know. You could get one one new child in district, military, or whoever it is. Based upon that that child's needs, that could really blow up your budget. So how do you plan for that? How do you budget for that? I think the state needs to play more of a key role here with special education, or not just Middle Town, for every community in the state. That that's really what they should be focused on, because that's really the wild card that, maybe wild card's not the right word, but it's the only thing comes to my mind, is is with. Is making these towns successful as far as being able to provide what they need to provide, not just for the special education needs of those children, but also for our for our for our regular student population as well. Craig?
When you talk about the funding formula, that special education is is part of that, and from my perspective, the funding formula is broken. And it does not support towns like Middle Town. And we can't get into particulars, but the special education wrecked a budget, our budget. I I don't want to say this year, but it absolutely wrecked our budget. Because, like I said, it could be one student, it could be two students, and we're required to provide the care wherever it is is needed for that for that child and that family. And we have no control and we cannot budget for that.
Yeah, right. I mean, look, if if a child comes our way that has whatever the needs are, we have to provide for that. So we need to figure that out. And so I know in the past, I've had conversations with Teresa. Last year. last year about, or the year before about, you know, again, how do you budget for that? And it's almost like, but you know, it's almost like there should be some type of special education contingency fund that is only available based upon a change in a child's needs or additional children that come in. That's the only way that I see that can really, you can really plan and budget properly for this. Otherwise, it kind of blows your budget up. And it's not, and it's no fault of anybody. And nobody's, I'm not saying that maliciously or, but those are facts that we need to figure out.
I have talked to several legislators, state legislators about that very issue. And I'm hopeful that there will be some legislation this year to address the special, special education piece, uh, to, to, and I've talked to, um, Sean, uh, about it as well, about some of the issues where I think the state will, uh, do something at some point to, to address that. But again, it goes back to the funding formula. And the funding formula is, is broken.
Yeah.
And the other thing I would say is the RIDE, we have so many unfunded requirements that RIDE imposes upon us. We can get you a list of those if we'd like, but that's, that's part of it.
Council Toronto.
Thank you, Mr. President. Greg, good evening, Town Council. Bill, thank you for coming. You just hit on something in regards to RIDE, the unfunded mandates of RIDE. I mean, do you have just a page on that in itself that, things that are unfunded that they mandate on us? And we were talking about the multilingual language as well. And I saw a special ed for the first time. I was thinking, when did the schools get into the medical industry? I mean, it was like the amount of resources that it took out of the school's budget. I thought there had to be some type of insurance that you can take out to cover yourself in case you, that something happens like that, right? So that, and it's kind of, so I'm happy that you're not happy with the funding formula, and I think those are two important areas to look into.
If I may, I received a list today, um, that is intended to be full and comprehensive. It was fifteen pages long of unfunded mandates. Right. Yeah, I'm happy to share.
And we're in such partnership with them in regards to building the new schools, right? So we're over here working with RIDE to determine what we wanna put in our schools, what special ed will put in our schools, what technology will put in our schools. And then over here, they're mandating that we do things that we can't afford to do that affect the kids today. Doesn't make sense to me.
You, you, go ahead.
Sorry, Billy, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, you, you brought up the, the issue of MLLs. And that's been a hot topic lately. They have new regulations coming out. I will say that's one thing I'm happy that we're very, very far ahead of the curve on.
Great.
By the end of, in the new regulations, I won't bore you with all the details, and the new regulations. You're welcome. You made me lose my train of thought here. In the new regulations.
Regulations.
Yeah. In the new regulations, you can get, um, what's called an endorsement now instead of a full teaching certificate for MLLs, and that qualifies for some of the support that these students need, um, through, through grant funding and, and our team, we've, we've secured by the end of the school year, we'll have fifty percent of our teaching staff with those endorsements. So what that does is that frees us up instead of, you know, we've talked about MLL teachers in the past, it's been, we need ten more MLL teachers, and those are dedicated folks. And we still have a need for some of them, or for them, period. But now because we, we have so many more qualified educators in our schools, fifty percent, we're, we're going for more. We're ahead of those, we're ahead of the curve as far as the state goes. I mean, I'm convinced that we're gonna be an exemplary suburban school district as far as that goes. Because it's, it's a, it's a tremendous challenge. Um, we just, we're ahead of the curve and we've been prioritizing this for, for some time now, so.
And I know you guys work on a lot of good things. I'm gonna talk a little bit about homelessness tonight in regards to, and, and, uh, hunger in Rhode Island. So it's something that I know affects us in our schools as well. And, uh, just, we should work closely together to make sure we're, we're all, you know, not overlapping what we're doing, but rowing in the same direction. So I look forward to working with you.
Agreed.
So I would just say that, listening to what Council Toronto said is that he brings up some good points. And I'm not saying he's pointing fingers, any of those are facts, and we all feel that way, but, you know, at the end of the day, it's, it's up to us to, to figure it out. They're not gonna say, okay, we're gonna pay for all those unfunded mandates. It's not gonna happen. So we need to control what we can control and put our heads together and figure this thing out for the best outcome for the children and the best outcome for the taxpayer. That's what we need to do. And I'm convinced we can do that. Okay, Charlie.
Couple of questions for you, Billy. Thank you. Just wanna, first of all, ask, and I, I think I know the answer to this, but I'm gonna ask it for the residents to know as well. How involved are the principals in the budget decisions and the staffing decisions going on right now?
That's a great question. That's one that's come up every time I've been here. So Barry, we switched, we switched to kind of a new budgeting process this year that is much more, um, in the hands of principals. I, I can tell you that they're a hundred percent, they're in a hundred percent control of their budgets this year.
And that's a big change from in the past to Middletown. I think we all can realize that. That's, that's been a big change. So thank you.
It is.
Um, what's the, currently, do you know offhand, like, what's our teacher to student ratio right now?
I was an English teacher. I did, I, I left my phone in my truck.
Oh, so it's the one to twenty-five for grades, three to twelve.
Oh, is that what you mean, in the classroom? Or are you talking about generally?
To teacher ratio.
Uh, well, that's.
It's one to twenty from K to, K to two, and then one to twenty-five.
Twenty-five is a class size limit, but you'd have to divide the eighteen-hundred by three hundred and nineteen.
Well, some classes are bigger than others depending on the specials, the support services, like a special education class, maybe smaller when they have an extra TA or two TAs. It just varies. And so to do that, it, it also depends on the school. So one school may have, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, I don't mean to jump in, but. But what, but some schools may have an extra third grade versus the other school may have another, another second grade. I think it just depends on the age group and, and how many are in that district too, right? Because.
In the school, yes.
And they do move, sometimes they'll move a student from a, a district's child, a school who belong, who should be going to Farstavina, for example, but they could be at capacity and they have to move them to, um, uh, Guidnik, and then we are responsible to bus them, uh, as well. So there's an additional transportation, but that's to keep everybody.
You're saying it's in the twenties? You said twenty students per teacher?
K to tw- K to kindergarten through second grade is one to twenty. And third grade through twelfth grade is one to twenty-five.
That, that's the maximum.
That's the maximum.
So what's our average here? That's what I'm looking for. Compared to the national average. That's, that's why I asked the question.
Like I said, I'd have to, I'd have to do the math. You'd have to divide the total.
I can, you can email me too if you want.
I can do that. Thank you. Like I said, I was an English teacher and I don't have a calculator on me.
Yeah. And if you don't have any questions, that's fine. I mean, the answers, that's fine.
Yeah.
Uh, some things just.
I don't know the average.
For the moment, question, and you know, next time we meet, uh, you have the answer, that's fantastic.
It's an easy one. I can email you.
Charlie, that'd be great.
And just one more question.
Sure.
You identified some shortfalls in service now, like what, can you give us an example of?
Shortfalls in service?
Yeah, to students, our current.
Sure. Um, that are, just our MLL population, just since we're on the subject, it's, we're, we're struggling. So like I mentioned, we have teachers that are endorsed, which is fantastic. But under the RIDE regulations, current and moving forward, they're required to have a designated ELD block every day. And.
But what does that mean to a guy like me?
Good question. English language development. They, they, they need, they need this, this time with a special teacher that's got this high level certification that can give them exactly what they need. And right now at Goday, I think our numbers are forty-six of those kids for one teacher. Right? And so while I, we've always said we need, you know, ten more teachers or whatever, it's not, not, that's not what we're saying right now with the endorsements help with that. But again, you can imagine one teacher servicing forty-six kids in a rotation is a lot. So to me, that's not, that's not where we wanna be as a district.
That's all. Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Dennis.
So you have your, you know, specialty, English learning, lang-, you know, focused on a student who might need a little extra help. So they, and you have that need in math as well, correct?
We do have a need.
I thought if that, last year you had that in the budget to say, we need someone to help with math.
Yeah, but one thing I can tell you that's been great this year is, uh, through a grant, the RIDE, um, Mrs. Fonsika had secured a grant for coaching. So kind of two schools of thought on that. Coaching side is you're improving instruction, which benefits everybody versus a pullout model where you're helping a few. So they can work hand in hand, they can work together, but at this point with that coach, we've impacted instruction in many, many of our classrooms. So that's been an improvement.
So I've seen, you know, the numbers that I get on occasions in regards to the performance of the students. And the last couple of times I read them, they're going in the right direction, which is great. And, you know, when I thought I saw something on the math side of things that it could use some, you know, some extra help there. So I'm hoping that somehow we can give you some budget that we can find to get some math tutors in there.
It's certainly a priority.
And the after-school program's going okay right now?
That's, I was just gonna say that, and coupled with the after-school program and being intentional in who we bring in and what supports they get. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a full wraparound. We're looking for full wraparound services.
Sounds like a loaded question, wasn't it?
No.
I'm just kidding.
It's been a question I wanted to ask him for a while. Or make a statement for the public to hear how well that school's doing well. That after-school program is doing well.
We, we are doing great.
Yeah.
So let me ask you, and maybe I'm wrong, do a lot of kids struggle with math now that Dennis brought that up. I know, I know I struggle with math, I know my son struggled, maybe it's a genetic thing, I don't know, hereditary, but, but I, it seems like a lot of kids struggle with math.
I, I, it's, it's a need in our district. It's a need everywhere. It's a need in our district. It really is.
You know, one of the things, and, and I did get a math degree, believe it or not, but I always felt like if they get stuck in math somewhere and they can't go beyond that, they give up on math as a whole. Math is made up of a lot of different things. So if all of a sudden they're in something that's not making sense to them and someone can help them over that hump, then the next math class could be like something they enjoy.
Sure.
Then they figure it out a little bit later when they get a little smarter, kind of thing. So.
If you don't, if you don't know your multiplication, it's, it's tough.
Yeah, you're stuck, you know, then you come in. You're a distraction to be like, I don't even wanna be here. I saw that when I was human in school, I saw that.
I agree. That's why I became an English teacher.
Yeah.
Well, in it, I think during the COVID years as well, um, I saw a report one time that said math was one of those subjects when the kids were home learning at home, they're only taking in twenty percent. Versus like they could learn more of English. So I think we're still dealing with a little bit of that. You know, I can tell you my fifteen-year-old has struggled a little bit and stopped changing math, then maybe, right?
Yeah.
And then maybe we, our, us parents can help, so.
I also think, I, I also think.
I'm being serious about that too.
Yeah, and I know the feeling. I have a, I have a sixteen-year-old as well. And, and there's also tremendous push for literacy, right? I mean, it's just, it's just kinda, kids have to read as well. So we spend a lot of, we spend more time on reading than we do on math. It's just how the minutes work in a day. Uh, not to say math's not important, but there's something to what you're saying.
So Billy, just on the math thing, so, and I'm sure there's certain requirements, but, you know, the, for the kids that struggle with it, um, you know, I know the after-school program and that kind of thing. It just reminds me when I, I struggled in ninth grade, I can remember sitting in Ms. Duffy's class in the middle school and just getting lost with the Xs and the Ys and the twos after it and all that crazy stuff. So for me, it was, and I got by, but I got by with a D barely. And so, um, when, when, when I went back to college when I was twenty-six years old, I kept taking classes, non-metricalating, but when I decided to go back full-time and get my, get my bachelor's degree, Salve offered a couple of classes that were math ninety-eight and math ninety-nine, cause I said, how am I gonna get through this? And they started with math ninety-eight, it was accelerated. It was, you know, from basic addition, subtraction, all the way up to the end of that semester, we started algebra. Math ninety-nine, and it's amazing how you forget to multiply fractions and all that stuff when you get older, right? So when you get to math ninety-nine, it went through algebra up to calculus, because calculus was a required. I took that in the summer with less classes, so I could get through that. But, um, but does, does, does RIDE or anybody ever consider something like that for kids that struggle? You, you know what I'm saying? And I'm not saying to that degree because I was out of it so long, so I, that was welcoming to me.
Sure.
But, and you know, I, I just, there's gotta be something else out there for these kids that just dread going to school because of math.
At, at the high school level, it's actually gotten more challenging to support some students because the requirements are more rigorous now.
Yeah. But that's not for everybody though.
Nope, I agree. But.
It's like saying everyone goes to college, everyone has to take calculus. That shouldn't be the case.
I agree. I agree. But what we're doing as a district is like I mentioned, our MTSS team. Um, so we're, we're just hitting intervention systematically at this point, and we're doing it young, we're doing it across the board, and we're building it all the way up to the, through the twelfth grade.
And we're not, and I'm not looking to lower anybody's standards, but they should meet what those children need.
Sure.
So anyway, that's my math toolbox, so I apologize. Any councils have any further questions? You guys have anything else for us?
I do not. Thank you.
No. Peace out.
Yeah, I just wanted to add what you were saying, the difficulty that all districts have is the amount of time in a day. And, and that's why the after-school program is very helpful, but then again, it's very limited. And with all the curriculum changes that have been happening in the past several years, the past fifteen years, and how they've evolved and changed very differently from when we went to Middletown High School. It's, it, it's a different time, you know? We could do math and, and our parents could help us, but you're right. To help our, our children today is a very complex thing as adults. But I just think it's not enough hours in a day. So when you, I, I talk about a math class like that, students that need it, and there's a lot of them out there, you have this much time in a win, you know, in that short day. So it's, it's tough.
Yeah.
That's what they've talked about extending the school day overall, and, you know, that hasn't happened yet.
Right, yeah.
I think, Mr. President, just wanna, I wanna, and I agree with her that, you know, plan of, you learn three sixty-five is that you're learning all the time, right? And so we've stretched it out, having that after-school program so that we could make time for kids during the evening or during school or during, you know, the summer. So I'm in agreement. I think we're moving in that direction. It's gonna have to stay there. Regards to these kids being able to get, you know, if I can't get Spanish at in the morning, maybe I can take it on the weekend or something along those lines to try to fill that requirement. And it's more of a flexible schedule when they're in high school, twelfth grade, eleven, ten, nine, they can manage their time. So we gotta come up with ways to be able to educate them three sixty-five.
To support them. I agree.
Okay. Well, we're looking forward to, uh, some more, um, sound numbers as they come in.
Absolutely.
And looking forward to working with you guys to be able to figure this out. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. So Greg, you're gonna need to close out. If you're, if you guys are all set, you're gonna need to close out your, uh.
I want to take a motion to adjourn the Middletown School Committee meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn the Middletown School Committee meeting?
Second.
Motion has been made to adjourn the Middletown School Committee meeting and it's been second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. The Middletown School Committee is adjourned at seven fifteen PM. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
Yeah.
Motion to recess, five, ten minutes?
Second.
We have a motion to recess while, uh, the school committee folks, uh, leave, but you're certainly welcome to stay. And, um, are we gonna move these tables now? Is that what we're gonna do? So folks can come up and talk? Are you, we're good leaving them like that? Okay. We have a motion to second recess. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Grace, you ready? Okay, folks, let's get started. Chris?
Motion to reconvene.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ready? Okay, thank you. Okay, six thirty regular meeting, which is almost seven thirty. But before we do that, I'd like to have a moment of silence. Our town administrator, Sean, he lost his mom a little over a week ago now, Arlene. And so, you know, any of us that ever lost a parent, you know that when that parent's a big part of your life. It leaves a pretty big void. We all know it heals over time. It never goes away. But for Shawnee, as Mrs. Brown used to call Sean. And Sean, I'd just say, you know, Sean and I had, and his mom had medical issues over the past few years. And he took excellent care of your mother.
Well, thank you.
Very, very proud. We were, we were very flexible with Sean, as you should be. Family always comes first, no matter what. I think we're all taught that at a very young age. As we grow older, we see how years go by and how short life can be. Cause you never know. But. It was, you were, you were, I'm not just saying that you were a great son to your mom and the, and the way you and Celia and your, and your. And your two kids cared for her. So, and I will say that. You know, it's funny how the avenues that life takes you. My oldest sister Evelyn had passed away years ago and. Sean and Sean's mom and my sister Evelyn were, you know, involved in the nearie and that kind of stuff years ago. And I remember her back then, so. And, and they both, you both used, both used to like to raise a lot of. Just say have a lot of fun, you know? And so Sean and I actually talk about that now and then, but. Sean, you and your family, you know, you're in our thoughts and prayers and. You know, you did a great job with your mom and we'd just like to have a moment, a moment of silence for you and your family.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm gonna do a town business update. Number eight. Town administrator providing an update on A, the school building project and B, the library building project.
Motion to begin the school building project and library building project updates.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Start with the school building update. This past week, we've finished up the reconciliations for the most part, reconciling the cost. Of the project. With our, our estimator that works with the architects versus the estimate that would be. Developed by either Gilbain Construction or Bentley Construction. After a, a number of hours working over the past couple of weeks. The project is basically reconciled. We're, we're off maybe less than a little, under a million dollars is the difference right now, but. But nothing material. So for, for all, you know, purposes, we, we are balanced. So that is a, a really big milestone. In balancing the cost of the project, there were no major revisions on this second pass. I think I've, I've often come up here and talked to you about the fact that we did this reconciliation back before sometime in the mid fall. This is. A reconciliation based on sixty percent design documents. So. Really hard decisions that were made by the. School Building Committee and the Design Team. You know, have paid off so that now that we're at this sixty percent design stage. We're in really, really good shape. And I think at the last meeting, we talked a little bit about what sixty percent means. That really means the design is pretty much finalized and now we start putting together the construction documents so that we can go out to bid. So. On time, on budget. I guess that's, that's the message. But really a tremendous job by the consultants as well as our volunteers. The planning board, our preliminary plan is scheduled to go in front of the planning board on February twenty sixth. So that's on the books. We have got our permits back. We got our permit back from the Airport Corporation or the FAA. We don't have an issue with the airport. We're waiting on permits from, for stormwater and DOT, and those are expected here shortly. We received three proposals to study the project labor agreements. The Solicitor's Office is reviewing those with the school attorney as well as our consulting attorney. And that should be on probably the next docket to award the contract for that work. And that's the update for the school project, really. Again, you know, we're, we're meeting the schedule and all of our, our milestones. So it's. It's a really great story, continues to be a great story. On the library. The Library Board of, Board of Trustees have appointed three public members to the committee. Don Moran, Carolyn Magnus, and Rick Lombardi. And right now the librarian is scheduling a kickoff meeting with the, the building committee itself. For anyone who hasn't followed the last couple of meetings with the town council. The town council adopted an ordinance that establishes the library building committee. And it mirrors how we've organized the school building committee where. There is a partnership between the town council and in this case, the Library Board of Trustees. To work on the project so that. One part of the town isn't working on a, you know, off a different page than the other side. So we work collaboratively. And work towards another successful. Project that will benefit the community overall. They'll have their kickoff meeting and then shortly after that, we'll start to evaluate proposals that we receive for a project manager. To get the project moving forward. The only other thing I'll point out is our joint facility, shared facilities manager, Ed Collins, will start on February third. He will be at that meeting and he will be there to assist. You know, not only the people on the project, but myself in getting that project up and running. So that will be a. A, a much welcome. Resource to this will make my life a lot easier. But Ed has extensive experience in this area and looking forward to him on board, getting him on board. To help make sure we do this right. So, continue to do things right. So those are the two updates I have.
That's good. Thank you, Sean. And I think. You know, Ed will certainly be a welcome addition to the, to the town staff with his, with his. With his experience and expertise in, in building schools and, and, and facilities management. So. We're all looking forward to February third for sure. Okay.
Motion to act as a board of licensed commission.
Motion to second act as a board of licensed commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Acting as a board of licensed commission, number nine, advertised for public hearing. Application for Island Management Incorporated, DBA Flows Clam Shack. Four Aquinic Avenue to transfer a class BV liquor license to four Aquinic Opco LLC, DBA Flows Clam Shack. For the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five licensing year for the use at the same premises.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to second, open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak? On this license transfer? Okay?
There is no one on Zoom.
No one. Thank you for the reminder.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye. Motion to grant said license transfer.
Have a motion to second at grant said license transfer. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Number ten, advertised for public hearing, application of DNH Incorporated, DBA Cottington Brewery Company. Hold of a class BM alcoholic beverage license for premises located at two ten Cottington Highway to transfer one hundred percent of stock in said corporation.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to second, open. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this license transfer? Okay? Anybody on Zoom? Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to second to close. All in favor?
Aye. Motion to grant said license stock transfer.
We have a motion to second to grant license stock transfer. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. Number eleven, application of East Main Road Restaurant eighty eight Incorporated, DBA Mindy's Galley. Seventy two, seventy two East Main Road for a class BV alcoholic beverage license for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five licensing year. For use at the same premises. This is new, so our action really tonight is advertised for a public hearing and notification to rebutters.
Motion to receive said application and advertise for public hearing to be held on February eighteenth, twenty twenty five.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to reconvene as a town council.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public forum. Number twelve, pursuant to rule twenty five of the rules of the council, citizens may address the council on one subject only. Said subject of substantial town business need to discuss during the regular meeting nor related to personnel or job performance. Citizens may speak for no longer than five minutes and must submit a public participation form to the council clerk. Prior to the start of the meeting, any items discussed during this session will not be voted upon. And we do have one, Mr. Viveras. We have two. Sorry. Mr. Vares, you're up first.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council, Anthony Viveras, forty five Bayview Park, Middletown. I was asked a couple of weeks ago by a gentleman about the use of plastic bags. So I looked up the law and what it says is Rhode Island. Ban plastic bags by retail establishments. The Rhode Island Plastic Waste Reduction Act, ban bag, bag ban. Prohibits the use of single use plastic bags by retail establishment. The state law passed in twenty twenty two and went into effect in. January one of twenty twenty four. The law is strongly enforced by local municipalities and Rhode Island DEM. But then I see Middletown, Rhode Island enacted a ban on the use of single use plastic bags. In retail establishments on January one, twenty twenty three. And gentleman asked me, well, if we, if I can't use a plastic bag to get rid of my yard waste. How come the town is using a plastic bag to get rid of waste in the, in the, in the tote? And I said, I did not know. So I said, I would bring it before the council and they can. Can advise me opinion or.
You're talking about the pay as you throw?
Yeah.
Trash bags?
Right.
So are those? Biodegradable?
They aren't.
They are?
They are not.
They are not. Okay.
That was reviewed when we looked at the pay as you throw program and there really isn't a viable. Biodegradable slash paper bag, you know, as people have them outside, they, they, they fall apart and then. They just don't work for trash, you know? And I guess that's something we can go back and see if, if they've come up with a, a different solution since. Since the program's been implemented. So I can, I can, I will look at that and get back to you. But we did, we did investigate that when we started the program. I think we looked at some bags that they were using in Ireland and places like that, that. They, they just disintegrate and then it, it becomes a problem as far as rodents and, and things like that. So we'll, we'll. Investigate and get back to you.
Okay, yeah.
How about a bag like. For me to get rid of my yard waste, I either have to put it in a barrel. And put it out or buy one of those bags from Home Depot. One of those biodegradable bags. And maybe look into something like that. Just a, just a suggestion.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Art Weber.
Good evening, Art Weber, one four five Island Drive, also in my part-time work, chairman of the planning board. I'd like to just talk for a couple of minutes about, five minutes about term limits. As you know, the planning board and zoning board are the only boards in this town that have term limits. And the elected people don't have them either. Nevertheless, they're here and we have to deal with it. And I want to give you an example of what I see as a problem. problem. In the last two or three years, our planning board has been transformed from a planning board to a planning zoning board. Two or three years of very difficult work and transition. Uh, Apeley, uh, we've got a lot of help from Peter and also Ron Olansky. But I want to leave a lot of credit to our chairman, Paul Coche, who led us through this stuff, and it wasn't easy. So we get done with this, everything comes out, and it looks like we're in good shape. Paul Coche is term limited off the planning board. It doesn't make any sense. Here's a guy that worked very hard, accomplished an awful lot, and he used to go sit in the bunk room. Uh, what I'm concerned about is, uh, we're coming up with the two biggest challenges my, this planning board has ever faced before. We're partially in it with the Gordo School Development Plan Review, and we're coming up with the West Main Road corridor, which is going to be another very, very big deal. What I'm worried about is how many other people are going to be forwarded off for term limits. Now, I don't keep track of that. Scorekeeper's sitting over there with the stripes on. So.
I, uh. You're missing the whistle.
I understand, I, I understand completely what needs to happen. This has, is a charter issue. If, if we're going to change it, it has to go before the voters, and I'm not recommending some silly election because it costs too much money. What I would, the only thing I'm asking you to do is to consider next time we have an election, to put this back on the election, whatever, whatever that issue is, and take away the, uh, issue of short-term rentals for the planning and zoning boards. Okay? Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, can you, excuse me, Art.
Dennis does have a question. Sorry.
Actually, what do you, what was your recommendation at the end there?
My recommendation is when we have an election for something else, you know, maybe dog catcher or something really big, we, we add this issue to change term limits, take term limits away from both the planning and zoning boards, because it's a charter issue. So we'll have an election for something fairly soon. I'm not sure what it is, but I think if, if you guys can help me out with that, I think that's what I would hope you would do. Because I think it's counterproductive, and you can see in at least in this one case, it certainly seems to be my, my estimation. Okay?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, sir. Anyone on Zoom? No one on Zoom. Can we have any more? Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, let's move on to the consent calendar. Is any, any, um, councils that would like to take any items off the consent calendar? Number fourteen.
Take number fourteen off.
Okay.
So motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item number fourteen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number fourteen memorandum of town administrator in reference to adding ordinance to regulate temporary storage units on residential property. The planning board recommendations on file. The memorandum of town administrator regarding planning board recommendations on file. Council actions to advertise for a future public hearing.
So motion to receive said memorandum and advertise for a future public hearing.
Okay, discussion. Counsel Logan.
So I pulled this off because we have a request from, uh, Mr. Viveras to speak to this item.
Okay. Do you want to speak on this side?
Name is Counsel Anto Viveras, forty five Bayview Park. I was concerned about this, because I know one particular person. He's a young man, and they decorate quite extensively for Halloween and Christmas, and they don't have room in their garage, so they had to get a portable, uh, storage shed to store this. Now, you gotta get, pay a hundred dollars for a permit, and can only have it on his property for five eighths of a year. There's a total of, 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 uh, hundred and eighty days and plus you get an extension of sixty days, that's two hundred and forty days, that's three hundred and sixty-five days in a year. Now, if I have a shed this big, and I put it on a fixed foundation, puddings, I could take a permit out for that one time. But if I put that size of my driveway, well, a cool, whatever in it, no hazardous waste or anything, uh, I can only have it there for two hundred and forty days, and it's going to cost me a hundred dollars for a permit. Now, I just think that personally, it's, I just, I'll just leave it, I'll just leave it like that, but, uh, I just don't think it's, it's, it's appropriate. Uh, it seems that people, uh, can only do less and less with their property unless they pay the town for it. So I'm gonna, just gonna ask the council to re- reject that. I don't think that's, that's necessary. Like I say, if it's a fixed thing, okay, but for portable, and when that young man leaves home, they can get rid of it. Is it what needs to solve?
So, Anton, I'm trying to figure out what, I, I know your issue is the, is the permit fee. Is the, is the, do you have any other issues with it, or is it the, the length of time?
The permit fee and the length of time. Now, if it was a hundred dollars one time, okay. But it's, looks like to me, it's a hundred dollars for two hundred and forty days, which means you're gonna pay a hundred dollars, and then two and forty days, he's gonna get, uh, get rid of it. This, or either that, I can see, I can see reapplying for another hundred dollars for another hundred and forty days for the rest of the year. I, I just think that's a little overreach. Myself.
Okay.
So.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you fill out a form, sir? I'm, I would say, I'm against guessing that's no, right? Okay, why don't you come on up and just state your name and address for the record, please? I'm pretty sure you know what the rules are?
I do.
Okay.
And like I said, if I had known it was going to be pulled off the consent calendar.
I know, I'm just kidding.
Uh, Rick Lombardi, Six Orville Drive.
Yes.
Middletown. Um, so about a year ago, I was working in the zoning office, as you all well know, zoning enforcement. Genesis of this came up a long time ago. Talked to Sean a number of occasions. What we were getting, we were getting complaints about people putting these storage containers on their property for long periods of time, using them for storage, and basically subverting the ability, the, uh, the ordinance to get storage sheds. They didn't have to get it. There was no fee. They could put them on their property for an infinite number of, uh, as long as they wanted, and there was nothing governing this. I've got one in my neighborhood. I know what it's being used for, and at the end of the day, uh, somehow we needed to regulate these. People are putting them on their property, they're putting them against their driveways, and they're using them for storage, indefinite storage. And it was a way of getting around being able, having to pay to get a, uh, a, a shed put on their property, because then they have to go to setbacks in some cases, depending on the size of the shed, and it was just a way of getting around that in many cases. And fortunately, in some of the cases where we got complaints, we would go talk to the property owners, we'd work out something with them, and eventually some of them removed them, because neighbors were complaining. They were unsightly. I mean, they're these big storage containers, you know, they use, moving companies use them and the like. Um, I know people who are businesses are putting on their properties. They don't have storage at their businesses, and they're using it to store materials for their businesses. Uh, you know, and without, you know, outing somebody here tonight, um, I can certainly show you a couple of cases where that's happening. So this ordinance is a good ordinance. You may need to maybe tweak it a little bit, you know? I think the fee is reasonable. I think if you want to get an extension, it's reasonable, but at the end of the day, um, these big storage containers don't belong in neighborhoods. You know, if you need storage, then go to the town ordinance, go to the building office, and get a, get a permit for a, for a shed, and then adhere to the setbacks and everything else that everybody else has to adhere to. So I would strongly urge you, you know, if you feel it needs to be tweaked, that's fine. I know how that works. But at the end of the day, I think this is a good start to, uh, uh, alleviate an issue that I can tell you up in, up in the zoning office with the, the building and zoning officials, i- it's an issue, and there are a lot of complaints, but there's nothing you can do about it. There was no ordinance that had any teeth. You had to get cooperation from the people that had them. Unfortunately, with some of these people, they did cooperate, but so.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your indulgence. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Rick. Go on.
There is a memo, um, on the record that recommends dropping the fee from a hundred dollars to fifty dollars, which is the minimum fee that we can charge for a building permit.
Okay.
That in our packet? I didn't see that.
It is.
It is, yeah.
And fourteen.
It was, it was somewhat out of order.
So, so we have, we have a motion to a second to, to advertise this. So that's what we're gonna do. And, uh, we'll, we'll take a look at it. What's the feeling of the council right now?
Any questions?
Dennis.
Uh, Rick said something kind of interesting. Sean, do we have a lot of complaints?
Yes, that's why this came forward. Uh, while Rick worked in the zoning department, he and Kim had brought these issues to my attention, uh, and those have continued through. But, um, yeah, we get complaints from people because the, the container gets placed right up against someone's property, and it, it never goes away.
Right.
People use it for overflow from their business or a variety of different things, but, um, but we have no way to enforce it, because, because basically it, as it is right now, it's a, it's a temporary type structure. It doesn't fall into the same category as a shed, um, and there really is no way to address it. Um, you know, these, these things are supposed to be temporary, and.
So if, so if I get one of those little storage, which I did, I had, when dropped, because I was cleaning out my basement, and I'm like, okay, I gotta get everything out of here, and stored it in that pod for three months, you know, while I was finishing my basement, they would have to pay a hundred dollars?
Uh, well, I'm suggesting that it would pay fifty dollars.
At fifty dollars?
Yes.
So they go, they have to come in, get a building permit, pay the fifty dollars, and then get the pod, and they could have it there for that period of time?
Correct.
Okay.
We're not, yes. Well, we're not gonna keep going back and forth. Anton, I'm very, very flexible with you, and some of the counselors have said, and you bring up some good points, and it's no disrespect, but a lot of issues you bring up, you come back and forth, and there's other folks that want to speak, and there's other, other agenda items. I don't want to be short with you, but.
Well, all I'm gonna say is.
Pretty flexible, okay?
I'm gonna say, if I'm gonna put a permanent shed in my yard, I have setbacks, I gotta, I gotta get.
Correct.
Okay. Well, okay, I'm gonna put one of these in my yard, then why am I under the same requirement? Okay, I gotta, I want to put this in my yard. Can I put it? You got setbacks, okay, bottom of my driveway, it's in the corner driveway, it's out of the way, it's not everybody's way, it fits, okay? It would be okay to put a shed there, pay my hundred dollars for the permit, and that's the end of it.
And you're saying for, in perpetuity, for as long as you want?
Yeah.
Uh, I could never support something like that.
Treat this like you would a shed, but if I put a shed.
Not a shed, though. It's a square metal container.
That, that's right.
And if you allow that, imagine what the town might look like if we just allowed that.
Well, I'm just.
I'm not, a pod wasn't designed, in my opinion, and I'm not a pod expert, it's just my own opinion, to be something permanent. It's a temporary unit, rental unit.
Right.
To store something, not something that's permanent.
Correct, but not, but not for a hundred, hundred, two hundred and forty days. I know, I mean, there's my son, and he, he has all his stuff decorating, and he does, and that we, that why we need it is for that, to store the stuff for, you know, after, after, uh, Halloween and after Christmas, and then the next Halloween, he puts the stuff back out again. Now, when he goes off, when he goes off to college or he gets married, and I don't need it anymore, I can call a guy up and go take it away.
I don't agree with that.
Okay. Thank you.
That's just me. I'm one, one person. Okay. So this is Peter. This is coming to you?
No, this is gonna, this, this has gone to the planning board. Their recommendation has come back. It's gonna be.
Spot, but I'm going to, is that after that last meeting or the meeting before, Derek emailed me at like eleven o'clock at night and said, look, I want to make a donation to the significant donation. Very much to that, to that, um, to the, so the kids could have a trip. And he doesn't even live in Middletown. He has a business in Middletown. He lives in a neighbor in town, but has children, so thank, I just want to publicly thank you for doing that.
My pleasure.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody have any questions or comments? Is there anybody on Zoom? Okay.
Uh, motion to close the public hearing.
A motion to second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt said ordinance on its second reading.
Second.
A motion to second to adopt said ordinance in a second reading. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's move on to license permits. Number eighteen, application of four Aquinic Opco LLC DBA Flows Clam Shack for Aquinic Avenue for a victory, victory winning house license for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five licensing year. This is new.
Motion to grant said license subject to building official, fire marshal, and board of health.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number nineteen, application of four Aquinic Opco LLC DBA Flows Clam Shack for Aquinic Gaff an amusement license for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five licensing year. This is also new.
Motion to grant said license.
Grant said license.
We have a motion to second to grant, uh, Comus, I just have a question. Um, nothing's changing, right? If, nothing's changing, right? Would you just come on up and fill your name and address, sir, please? Um, same, same type of entertainment you've had in the past?
Same thing, same setup and everything.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. Anybody have any, any further questions? Okay, so we have a motion to second to grant. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. Number twenty, application of U- Ummami Buffet LLC DBA Ummami Buffet, eight seventy-two West Main Road for a victory winning house license for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five licensing year. This is also new.
Motion to grant said license subject to building official, fire marshal, and board of health.
Second.
A motion to second to grant. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Other communication, number twenty-one, communication of St. Patrick's Day Parade Committee in reference to support, request for support by placing an ad in the parade bulletin or donating to the parade committee.
Motion to receive said communication and approve a full-page ad, cost two hundred and fifty dollars, and the St. Patrick's Day Parade booklet to be appropriated from the council president's discretionary fund.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Thank you. Town administrator, number twenty-two, memorandum of police chief in reference to Bliss Mine Road, response for speed bump, speed humps.
Motion to receive said memorandum.
Second.
A motion to second to receive. All in favor?
Aye.
Chief Ryan. First time I get to say that publicly.
Yes, it is.
All right.
Still not used to it.
How you doing?
Good, thank you. How are you?
Good. You need to get used to it, because, uh, I'm sure you're doing a great job.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the town council. Um, back in September of twenty twenty four, the police department received a request from the residents of Bliss Mine Road, uh, for us to look at speed humps being installed, and the request was due to, uh, And the request was due to uh, an increase, what they, what they consider an increase in traffic. Uh, Bliss Mine Road specifically being used as a cut through, whether it be to avoid the congestion on Valley Road or West Main Road or just the fact that, so there was some roads under construction. There was an increase in traffic, it was being used as a cut through and with that increase in traffic came an increase in speed. So in response to the request, uh, we conducted a speed study and the speed study was conducted towards the middle to the end parts of September. And Newport also received the same request, so they, they also conducted the study with us. And based on that speed study, the results that came back, I do not feel in my opinion yielded the need for speed humps at that time. However, in the fairness uh, to the, to the members in, that, that made the request, the people that live on Bliss Mine Road, I really think their request was referring to summertime traffic and what we captured was post-summertime traffic. And so what I would like to do is I'd like to kind of table the request for speed humps and conduct another study uh, during the summer of twenty twenty-five and the early months, early parts of it, whether it be June or July, and come up with me, uh, numbers that may more accurately reflect uh, their concerns of, of Bliss Mine Road being a, a cut through. And then at that point, I think we can make a more educated um, suggestion for speed humps in the neighborhood.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I read this and I looked at the average speed. Um, I looked at the uh, the max speed, I looked at the number of vehicles per hour and day. And um, it certainly didn't justify it at this time, but I would suggest that when recommendations like this are made, of course, it has to do with the timing of the recommendation.
Correct.
Because usually it's after the busiest times, so I think maybe we should always look at peak seasons. And the only thing they have to realize that in fairness, before we make that decision, I think you're making the right decision and recommendation. Um, is that they're gonna lose another season.
Correct. Correct.
So, any councils have any questions of Chief Ryan?
I do, yeah. Thank you, Chief. Um, you know, I think this, we seem to be kind of chasing this issue around town right now, especially on our town roads. Um, I live on Elephant Lane, has a speeding problem as well. Um, is there any way as a town we can do a, you know, um, I wanna put pressure on DOT, like we said a couple of meetings ago, to do a study of traffic on this whole island. But is there any funds or anything we could do to, to study our local town roads? Because I don't wanna just keep throwing, it, it sounds like, you know, some of the things that we did on Paradise were kind of just a test. And it doesn't seem to slow things down much from what I understand for some of the residents there. So I'm wondering if not only just Bliss Mine Road, if this is a town issue we can look at, um, because the traffic has increased on this island and that, uh, when you live on a cut through road like I do, you, you feel the pain of that, for sure. Um, so I, I, I feel for the people on Bliss Mine Road because I, I get it. Um, but I think there's gonna be more roads popping up and I, and I'm wondering if we can tackle this on a townwide as well.
Okay, so. So that's probably a question more for you uh, to answer. I know Charlie, in the past, we've looked at um, some of the main cut through arteries like Forest Avenue.
Right.
Elephant Lane, uh, we've looked at Paradise Avenue, some of the beach traffic areas, uh, Green and Avenue, we've done as well. So, um, you know, now it's more of, I don't wanna say more of the smaller neighborhoods or roads maybe.
Yep.
But, you know, I don't think there's anything wrong with like taking a look, a holistic view. Um, but if there's no complaints, that's kind of how I guess, you know, going forward, we've handled it.
If I could, if I could meet with the chief, I, I think I'd like to start there. I mean, I have some ideas on how we might look at it.
Okay.
But I, I'd like to talk to him about it, I, you know, look at accident data, where we've issued tickets, those type of things. I think that, that may be a starting point. Um, can also talk to the town engineer about how we may, may look at measuring traffic uh, throughout the entire town.
Cool. Sounds good.
I just don't wanna keep chasing the problem around, Chief, you know, I, I think there are some other areas in town as well, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, understood. Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments for Chief Ryan? Thank you, Jay, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, town council, number twenty-three, continued from the January sixth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting. Memorandum of Councilor Dennis Toronto in reference to discussion of topics.
Motion to receive said memorandum.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dennis.
Right. All right, I put this, this is something that, you know, within the new year, I was kind of going through the town council, you know, looking at what this year, I wanted to try to focus on and stuff that's happening, you know, on the state level as well as the local level. And I know we've got a meeting coming up to talk about the council's priorities.
Yep.
Yeah, so, so there's some, some things that we're already working on here. Um, but I'm just gonna write, read down the list real quick, spend just a minute or two on each topic and then folks can decide, we can decide as a council, are these areas that we wanna focus on or, you know, and then what we're doing, or no, we're not interested, you know, at this time, you know, so, um. One of the top, you know, and this isn't in any one order, but homelessness and awareness in Middletown and Aquinic Island. I'm seeing a lot of conversation around the amount of um, homelessness there is on a state level. The state level, I mean, basically, I think it's grew at uh, thirty-eight percent, we're like number two in the nation. In regards to homelessness in the state and it affects us here too. We've had conversations of students who are considered homeless and people who live in their cars, so. I just think it's something we should talk about as a town, what are we doing and what resources are we committing to that? And I think we are. I know that we're working with Lori and, and the outreach department to assist with that. So I just think it has to be something at the top of, that we keep an eye on, kind of on a regular basis if we can, it's my opinion. Uh, I've been seeing a lot on the opioids and the addiction and awareness. Um, something that's been passed just, you know, uh, recently, um, was that settlement on the state level. So we, and you know, funding has been coming to us as a town, now all the, all the municipalities really. And it looks like in twenty-two and twenty-three and twenty-four, I'm looking at this right, Sean, please correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, collected about two hundred and ten thousand dollars. I just wanna make sure, you know, I'd like to know where that, you know, what that's going towards, you know, because this should be going towards opioids and addiction and, you know, services in those areas, whether we're partnering with Newport or we're partnering with Portsmouth, it is an issue. And we should be having that at kind of a top of our, our radar as well. Um, and then hunger is another one. I mean, there's articles you can go on at the state level and actually just key it in. I was in there just a little bit of keying and you can see that the, you know, again, back to the opioid settlement, funding project overview. And then um, even in the highest, you know, Rhode Island has second highest percentage of chronic homelessness. You know, these are area, these are things that are happening on a state level and it does impact us, you know, we can turn a blind eye to it or we can address it. And I think it just needs to be, those need to be at kind of the top of our chart. Um, just a few other things that, you know, Newport Water, uh, there was just an article in the paper in regards to lead pipes and that we as a, a community are supposed to be reporting back in if we think we have lead pipes. Last time I checked, lead is not a good thing to be drinking and uh, we probably need that update on what, what's Newport Water gonna do for Middletown. I've asked for this several times over the years and it's, I think they should come in and do a presentation for us to say, okay, where Newport Water, this is what we're gonna do in the next year for your infrastructure, this is what we're gonna do over the next ten years or five years, have a plan to replace our water lines or upgrade our systems. I know they put a lot of money into Newport, they should be putting more money into Middletown if you ask me. So I'd like to request the council, you know, get that on a docket and have them come present to us. Um, Rhode Island Energy, we have something going on there with the natural gas, a natural, natural gas supply to Aquinic Island. I know there's a lot already been said on that, so I think we're already talking about that. One thing I've, boards and commissions, um, I think it's important that we get an update from boards and committees um, like every six months or something like that, or, you know, okay, here's, you know, this is how we got the year started, six months into it, they come in and talk to us, you know, the chairman of each of the committees maybe comes in or we spread it out. And say, oh, this is what's going on in the open space and field, and then, you know, next week someone else may come in and just talk to the council and update every six months. I think it, it would be good for us to hear, but it'd be good for the public to hear that, you know, everyone's on time, on budget and we're getting everything done, so just something else I might make a recommendation on. And then um, I wanted to do that with the updates on the departments. I know we get an update at the end, you know, at the end of the year and the new budget, we get an update, so that's covered, but maybe six months in, again, they come in, they present, here we are, we're on budget, we're doing all these great things and the people can hear it and we can hear it, so. And I know we've talked about this, Sean's gonna tell me we do have this, uh, but I would like to dig a little deeper into a, a five-year budget for the town. We know, pretty much know what our expenses are from a flat line, so we're gonna, we know what we have to spend every year. And then there's projects that we put on top of it that we need to get done that year, we have to for whatever reason. Then there's gonna be things we're not gonna foresee, but we should be able to come up with a five-year budget and be able to say what we anticipate the tax rate to be. Just for planning purposes, you know, and it's gonna change. Next year's not gonna, I mean, we're gonna, and we're gonna endorse this year's and that's gonna lock that down. But can we look two, three, four, five years out? And, and really look at what the impact's gonna be to the taxpayers, because we have a lot of big projects going on. And we need to estimate what the tax burden's gonna be, and I think we've gotta look at ways to keep that percentage down. We either find other resource, revenue resources or cut spending. Sometimes we can't afford to do it, I know we wanna do it, but we gotta say no, so I'd just like to do that, I'd like to dig into that uh, from a, you know, if anyone else may be interested in getting a solid five-year forecast. Now, those are my areas that I'm gonna be focused on. I appreciate Paul giving me the chance to.
Yeah.
Talk about that. I'm sure we won't get to all of them, but I just wanna put them out there as things that I wanna focus on and I think we should at the state level. And I work with Sean as well. I think a lot of these things, like Lori's doing, the outreach department and, and working with citizens in our community on homelessness and doing some great stuff for the food banks and so, we're making good, good movement in those areas, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, and, and, and just one of those subjects, the homelessness was, you know, what, what I, what I think about that is, um, if you see something, say something. Um, I saw something a couple of weeks ago and I called Sean, somebody living out of their car. And I've seen it in the same spot a couple of times and, not that you wanna intrude in that person's business, but you wanna, you wanna make sure they're okay. So I, I think it's a, it's just a simple start, you see something, say something, you know? Um, so, uh, Council Connerton.
Well done.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I was gonna say very similar to what you said is, you know, you can also call Lori. And she'll get right involved and I've had that, where there was someone that stopped a shop, there was an issue. I saw her family down one of the shopping centers, you know, was panhandling, um, and, and she went down there and talked to them. I don't know what the ultimate result was, but she does a great job and, you know, once she finds out, she goes out there.
Yeah, because there's, there's programs or, or directions they can be pointed into if they choose to that. You just by, just by seeing it and saying it, that's it, you know, so. All right, Dennis, thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Just along those lines, the um, staff have completed the joint training with the city of Newport for the situation table. Um, the council supported, um, they've actually had their first joint meeting, um, and we did, Middletown did present someone who needed help, uh, and that, that successfully went around through that process, um, as, as did Newport, so. Um, that is the, the right avenue, I think to, you know, to your point, if you see something, say something, get it to Lori.
Yeah.
Um, and then we, we have that as a, as a protocol now to help people. Um, a, a number of names were submitted and we were able to identify those people were getting services from someone, but we, we did identify someone who was that person who's falling between the cracks and uh, got their name, you know, with, with people that can uh, help identify uh, services for that person and try to make their situation better. So Lori's, Lori's suggestion and the work they did to work with Newport, I think is, is, is already paying off at least for one person and, and hopefully many more.
Okay, excellent. Okay, uh, thank you, Dennis. Uh, boards and committees, number twenty-four, it's the memorandum of the town clerk in reference to appointments requested by the Middletown Local Two Hundred and Fiftieth Commission. Yeah, let's, let's talk about that. Is any, any council are interested in serving on this?
How often do they meet? When do they meet?
They don't have a set schedule. Uh, they're just starting now, it's only gonna be for about a year or a little bit more. Um, actually, Mary is on the committee and um, they're gonna do monthly until it gets closer and then they'll do a little more.
Yes, she can give an overview?
We've had one meeting.
That would be great, Mary, if you come up and kind of educate us. That's because she's the master clerk, yes.
So we met at.
Could you just, could you just pull the mic down, Mary?
Okay, so we've met at uh, Witherby School, um, and we formed a uh, committee. George Kroll is the chairman, uh, Phil Robertson is the vice chairman and I, I guess I'm secretary. So, so basically, we just, because everyone knows next year is two thousand twenty, um, six is the two hundred and fiftieth nationwide anniversary of the Declaration of Real, of Independence. And, and so the state is working with all of the towns to get Rhode Island really going. So that's what we were uh, kind of pulled together for. Um, and so a state representative came down and so now we're, we're all in the works, we can contact each other. But this is bigger than, we need somebody from the town council to be a town representative. And then we like representatives from the town to put this together. I mean, this is, this is bigger than just like the historical society is already, we've been working for a few years on this for, you know, what we'll do. But um, we need, you, you need more people to pull this off. If you remember back when we celebrated the town's birthday, remember, and, and we had the, at the park and all of that. Um, yeah, we had, there were quite a few people from different areas, because you've got the senior center, you've got the library, you've got the school department. You know, do you want fireworks? Do you want a clambake? You know, I mean, all the ideas that can be pulled together, but you, you need people to, to do that and um, uh, George will be your con, the contact person, he'll pull it all together so that we don't end up with all these people doing things and we're conflicting, you know, to put together a calendar, put together some kind of a booklet that will go out so the whole town know what, knows what's going on in Middletown. Because we do, we had, we were very active here at that time period, so we should be on the, on the map. So that's what we're looking for.
Okay. Any councilors interested in, look at that volunteer. There we go. And Mary, thank you for the overview. Okay.
Stand by for this one.
Yep.
Motion to receive said memorandum, request the town clerk to advertise for additional residence for the commission, appoint counselor Connerton as liaison to the commission, request the town administrator to appoint a representative to the commission, request the superintendent of schools to appoint a representative to the commission, and request the librarian to appoint a representative to the commission.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? And Peter, thank you for stepping up and, and uh, filling that role to represent us. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Number twenty-five, appointment of one member to the Affordable Housing Committee for indefinite term.
Motion to appoint Mark Donahue to the Affordable Housing Committee for an indefinite term.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number twenty-six, appointment of two members to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee for terms expiring March twenty twenty-eight.
Motion to reappoint Emily Buck and Patricia Grimes to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, terms ending March twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number twenty-seven, appointment of one member to the Board of Canvassers for a term expiring March twenty thirty.
Motion.
That sounds funny, doesn't it?
Twenty thirty?
Twenty thirty.
Right around the corner.
I know.
Motion to appoint Stacy Andrade to the Board of Canvassers, term expiring March twenty thirty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number twenty-eight, appointment of one member to the Economic Development Advisory Committee, complete a term expiring January twenty twenty-six.
Motion to appoint Henry Rick Lombardi to the Economic Development Advisory Committee to complete a term expiring January twenty twenty-six.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Number twenty-nine, appointment of one member to the Library Board of Trustees, complete a term expiring September twenty twenty-seven.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I would like to nominate Ronald G. Haru.
Okay. Are there any other nominations?
Second.
We have a second on that nomination. There's been a motion to nominate Ron Haru and a second. All in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose? Number thirty, appointment of one member to the Middletown Prevention Coalition, the civic volunteer organization sector for a term expiring April twenty twenty-seven.
Motion to reappoint Anne Schultz, Civic Volunteer Organization Sector of the Middletown Prevention Coalition for a term expiring April twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Number thirty-one, appointment of one member to the Pension Trust Fund Committee for a term expiring February twenty twenty-eight.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I would like to nominate Martin Capra.
Okay. Is there any other nominations? We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion to second to nominate Martin Capra. All in favor? Aye. Number thirty-two, appointment of three members to the Planning Board for terms expiring February twenty twenty-eight. Um, the council may waive the requirement for reappointments to the interview, to be, to the interview, to be interviewed. All new applicants shall be interviewed prior to appointment. Um, so we do have, Art would like to speak on this one. Uh, Mr. Weber.
Okay, Chairman of the Planning Board, one forty-five Island Drive. People appointed to the Planning Board have to be special. And most of the time we get it right. So we have a difficult choice. Uh, Charlie Valencourt and I are on the reenlistment group. And we have two candidates for the other vacancy. Paul Croce is here and Stephen Hudler. Stephen Hudler, uh, was introduced to me a couple of years ago when he first came to town and I sort of became his mentor. Because he had that thing for this town. He loves this town. Uh, and he's done a lot. He's on the zoning board, international lawyer. He's brilliant. He would be a great choice. However, Paul Croce's time in the bullpen is over. And he's eligible to come back on the planning board and he's also my friend. And I would say at this time, as we're getting ready to dive into two very, very significant things, um, my choice is to prefer Mr. Croce to take this particular slot. And, um, I've communicated that with Mr. Hudler and everything else. So my choice tonight for that open space is for Mr. Croce to come back and continue his good work.
Um, okay, thank you. Um, I'll be honest with you. I think you're a little bit out of line. Uh, calling Mr. Hudler, I caught wind of this a couple of weeks ago. And I actually called Mr. Hudler and I said, did Mr. Weber actually call you and tell you not to really apply and stay on the planning, uh, zoning board?
I didn't tell him to not apply.
So he said, yes, he did. So I said, well, how did you respond to that? And he said, I thanked him for that.
I did not tell him.
I just think that, I don't think you speak for the council, because I don't know how the council's gonna vote on this.
Well.
But I just think it's a little, little out of line to kind of pick and choose uh, when it's really not your decision at the end of the day.
Oh, wait a minute.
There's great, hang on, there's great candidates, right? But, and that's your opinion and you're certainly entitled to that. But I just, it just twisted me the wrong way. I think it's wrong.
Well, let me explain something.
Okay.
I have a, a relationship with Mr. Hudler and I respect him immensely. And I explained the situation to him. It wasn't just, don't pull out. I said, look, I've got Mr. Croce who's coming back. And I think he's the guy we should use now and pick for this and then later we'll get a spot for you. That's how it went. I didn't tell him anything about.
Okay.
He made his own choice.
Okay.
And I explained to him again, so. But I do see, we're, my role as chairman, I want the best people we possibly can get on this for what I run. And we haven't always done that, have we?
Uh, we make the decisions based on what we have in front of us at the time. Whether you, whether you agree with it or not, but to go cherry pick who you want, I think you're out of line, sir.
Well, let me tell you this. We do a lot of stuff on that board and we do it well.
You do.
We do it well, not because of me. But we do it because we have six other people who are dedicated to what's good for this town. So if I'm out of line, I'll accept that with great thanks.
Okay, thank you, Art. Okay. Uh, open up the nominee, oh, sorry, Chris, that's your, your to do. Yeah, so.
Uh, nominations?
Yep.
Oh, Mr. Can I have a question? Isn't Mr. Hudler on the zoning board?
He is.
I thought we don't do two boards.
He would get off the zoning board if he's appointed to this board.
Yeah. Members of the planning board are essentially limited to that board. So if someone is, someone from another board or commission can apply to be on the planning board and if they're appointed, then they would typically resign that other position.
Um, I would like to ask Counsel Roberts. Um, Charlie, since you're the newest council member, do you feel comfortable appointing people on how well you know them? I'm sure you saw their application. Um, we certainly can re-interview if it would make you feel better and I don't know how you feel about it. I'm just throwing it out there in fairness to, to yourself.
No, I appreciate that. Um, I think I, I think I know enough.
Okay.
To make a reasonable.
Just want to make sure.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Any, uh, any nominations?
Oh, I have a question.
Yes.
I'd like to nominate, uh, Charlie Valencourt.
Okay. You want to take them, how do you want to do them? Do you want to do them one by one? And vote on them?
I'm sorry, Mr. J.
Yes, sir.
You should take nominations.
Yep.
And then you should vote on those nominations in the order in which they were nominated.
Okay.
Is the way we would typically.
Well, second thought.
Okay.
Is that what we're doing then? We're doing one at a time, right?
Yep. Okay, I'd like to nominate Steve Hudler.
Second.
Okay. I'd like to nominate Paul Croce.
Second.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Art Weber. Okay. Well, let's vote on Charlie Valencourt. Uh, uh, all in favor of, uh, Charlie Valencourt, please raise your hand. Aye. Okay. What was that, Wendy?
I, the only, I had all yeses except for Barbara.
Okay. Um.
Charlie raised his hand.
Yes.
Oh, for Charlie Valencourt.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I've got two Charles.
Who's next?
Hudler.
Steve Hudler. Uh, all in favor of Steve Hudler, raise your hands. Okay. That's three, three, right? Okay. All in favor of Paul Croce, raise your hands. Okay. So that's Charlie and Paul. All in favor of Art Weber, raise your hands. Okay. So how do, how do we handle this now?
Go back and, uh,
Back and.
So you, you've, you've filled two, you have filled two of the positions.
We did.
And you can go back and attempt to revote for either of those, um, you know, go back in order and revote again for that remaining position and see if, see if anything changes.
Let's do that again. Okay. Steve Hudler, all in favor of Steve Hudler, raise your hand. Okay. All in favor of Art Weber, raise your hand. Okay, so what do we do now?
The same. So now we move on to.
We just, uh, yeah. You can continue it. You can appoint those two and
Okay.
continue it and, uh, we, uh, if you want, re-advertise for other candidates or.
Want me to put it on for the next meeting?
I'd put it on for the next meeting. Maybe Tom will be back. We'll have a, another person. We can figure it out one way or another. Fair enough.
So are we gonna appoint the two?
Yes.
Yes, you've, you've, you have appointed the two.
We have to.
Was that done? No motion necessary.
Um.
You've already, you have appointed Mr. Valencourt and, uh, Mr. Croce.
Okay, very good. Okay, let's move on. Number thirty-three, appointment of one member to the Roads and Utility Advisory Committee, professional member to complete a term expiring January twenty twenty-seven.
President.
Yes.
I would like to nominate James Delaney.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? We have a second.
Okay.
A motion to second to nominate James Delaney. All in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose? Motion carries thirty-four, appointment of three members to the Senior Citizens Board of Directors for terms expiring January twenty twenty-eight.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I would like to nominate Nancy Carroll for reappointment. Teresa Lasserta to reappointment and Elizabeth Maranci.
Okay, is there any other nominations? Huh?
Second.
We have a second. We have a second. Okay, a motion is second. All in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose? Number thirty-five, appointment of one member to the Tree Commission for a term expiring January twenty twenty-eight.
Motion to reappoint Karen Barbera to the Tree Commission for a term expiring January twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Counsel Connerton.
Earlier this evening, we had a moment of silence for Arlene Brown, Sean's mom. In addition to that deference, I would like to perform one more act of respect. Sean's bride, Celia, mentioned during the eulogy at the funeral that Mrs. Brown wanted to go out with a bang. There's more to the story than just that. In talking with Sean, a few days before his mom passed, he told me of the wish she had relayed to him. She literally wanted to go out with a bang by having those attending her services set off party poppers. I want to honor that request and invite anyone else that would like to take part to come up or come down in unison so that we can do that for Mrs. Brown.
So.
Let's go.
What is he doing? What's he doing?
And a lot of parents, Barbara. How's it going?
You're a good point and it's a bad. I'd say she's coming out here.
Hold that.
Yeah.
What is that way?
And pull the string.
Yeah, I would like anybody to get up here.
Get up here because I'm gonna.
All right. Who else wants a pop?
Hey, Mrs. Vaughn, make sure it goes that way.
I'm doing that, right?
All right, yes.
All right, my instructions. Listen, let's get up closer. I don't want to be here cleaning all that. So point it out, buddy.
Point it out.
Okay. One, three. One, two, three.
Oh, okay.
I'll tell you, we've had some interesting things go on at council meetings, but that may be the, uh, that may be the kick. So.
Final motion.
Peter, thank you for that tribute to Sean's mom. Sean's mom said she wanted to go out with a bang, so Counsel Connington, uh, organize that, Connerton. Sorry, organize that and, uh, we appreciate that. I'm sure Sean and his family does as well, so.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to second to adjourn. All in favor? Aye, thank you. Is it really? Wow.